Hi.
He's good.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call our meeting to order. Before I do that, I just want to make one note. There is a citizens' comments list down there. Please be sure if you would like to speak that you do sign up. Once we collect that list, we're going to go off that list because I know we have a lot of people who have signed up. Also, you need to put your name and address there. When I looked, there was at least one person who had not filled in the address. If you haven't completed the name and address, I won't call your name, so please put that down there. So, calling the meeting to order. Today is October 26, 2021. This is a business meeting of the North Kingstown School Committee. I would ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll?
Mr. Blasberg?
Here.
Mrs. Hildebrand?
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins? Mrs. Lima? Mr. Mather? Mrs. Schott? Brooke Thompson? Gabriel? Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could please call the calendar.
Our next school committee business meeting will be Tuesday, November 16, and then there'll be no school for the Thanksgiving break, November 24 to the 26.
Thank you. Any presentations or recognitions this evening?
None.
Okay, thank you. So, next are citizens' comments. So, as I mentioned, if you'd like to sign up, please make sure you do so. Put your name and address on the sheet. And we do please ask if you would limit your comments to three minutes. We have a lot of people who want to speak tonight. We want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to do so. For anyone who hasn't done it before, we do have a light here you can take a look at. It'll flash red when your three minutes are ending. When the light goes off red, that means your three minutes are up, and at that point, I'd ask you to please wrap up. So, if I could just get the list at this point. And if there's anyone else who wants to speak, if you could put your name on the second sheet. If not, we're going to collect that and we're going to work off of it, so. Thank you. Okay, so, first person is Will Valverde. And again, if you, when you come to the microphone, if you could please state your name and address for the record, for our clerks, for the minutes. And the person after that, because we have so many, we'll kind of do the on-deck routine, would be Susannah Tingley.
Hi, I'm Will Valverde. I live at 14 Cambridge Court in North Kingstown. Banning books is wrong. Our government should not be in the business of censorship. Educators should not be in the business of banning books. As a parent of two students in our NK schools, I want to thank the superintendent and the school committee for denying requests that some have made that we ban books, including one called Gender Queer. I've heard all these accusations about this book, that it's pornography, that it's deviant, that it somehow harms young adults and teenagers just by being in the high school library. So, I did what I hope any of our students would do when they want to know more about a subject. I did the reading. I read Gender Queer cover-to-cover. Not an excerpt, not a screenshot, not what somebody had to say about it on Facebook. I read the book. And I got to tell you, this isn't pornography. This is an autobiography of a young person trying to understand their identity, who they are, where they belong. And yes, that involves thoughtful, serious questions about gender and sexuality. But pornography is about arousal. It treats humans as objects, and that's not what Gender Queer is. This is a story about self-discovery. The message is that being gay, lesbian, or bi is normal. That a young person deciding not to have sex is normal. That being non-binary or trans is normal. The clear message is that everyone, regardless of gender identity or orientation, deserves love, respect, joy, and safety. And I suspect that it is this inclusive message that really bothers some of the people who want to ban this book. But it's so important. Trans and non-binary youth are much more likely than their peers to be the targets of violence and bullying. They experience extremely high rates of homelessness, and the rate of suicide among trans and non-binary youth is an ongoing tragedy. This is what happens when we shame young people. When we tell them that there is something wrong with who they are and who they love. When we silence their voices and treat their life stories as pornographic. We have to be better than that. And let's be real. A 17-year-old in the year 2021 is not going to their school library to check out pornography. But if a young person is looking for a story to tell them that they are valued, that they belong, a story to help figure themselves out and make them feel less alone, Gender Queer can provide that. Our high school library has a responsibility to provide that. So, I urge anyone who is worried about the contents of this book or any other one to actually read it. You'll see for yourself that Gender Queer is not pornography. It's a memoir. You may find that it's not for you. You may not like it, and you may not agree with everything in it. But that's no reason to ban a book. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susannah Tingley.
The display of Gender Queer--
If you could, sorry, if you could start with your name and address, please.
Susannah Tingley, 750 Hattery Road.
Thank you.
The display of Gender Queer was hidden from parents during the high school open house, and flyers informing parents of this book were taken from their cars by high school staff. I'll read what they were hiding. I was 11 or 12 years old the first time I remember fantasizing about having a penis. I held a folded handful of grass between my legs. For years, my standard method of masturbation was stuffing a sock into the front of my pants and manipulating the bulge. This would evolve into hip thrusting while thinking of my latest gay ship. Memorably, I got off once while driving just by rubbing the front of my jeans and imagining getting a blowjob. It really never occurred to you that to put something into your vagina, not even a finger, so you've never tasted yourself? You should try, and so vagina slime. My first, the first sex toy she ever purchased was a $10 bullet vibrator. My first orgasm is still one of my most vivid, lovely experiences. The way she talks about orgasms makes me wonder if I've actually had one. I guess I should get one of these and try it. I remember leaning in my bedroom doorway, imagining how good this vibrator was going to make me feel. I got off by pressing the front of my jeans, the unopened box in my hand. My main kink is autoandrophilia. Penetration is a hard no for me, and I'm weirdly grossed out by some bodily fluids, so unfortunately, I probably wouldn't feel comfortable going down on you. We've made out, we've had sex, we've moved on to sexting at work. I got a new strap-on harness today. I can't wait to put it on you. It will fit my favorite dildo perfectly. So, you are going to look so hot. I can't wait to have your cock in my mouth. I'm going to give you the blowjob of your life. Then, I want you inside me. Barnes &amp; Noble and the publisher designate Gender Queer as an adult graphic novel. Dr. Mullen, Superintendent of Brevard Public Schools, agreed this book violates school guidelines, has no place in schools, and then ensured there were no similar books in the libraries. In response to a parent, our superintendent said Gender Queer is, quote, "a valuable resource." I do not consider the book to be pornographic, end quote. He compared these images to the statue of Michelangelo. I am astonished by your response, and I challenge you to describe these pictures as anything but obscene. This sexualized, racialized curriculum desensitizes children to pornography and sexual topics. And do you know what that's called? Grooming. If you continue to ignore our concerns, you will be complicit in the abuse of our children. The police described the use of this book in schools as morally bankrupt. If our local police feel this way, what does it say about your judgment and morality?
Thank you. Next person is Trish Goodkin.
Hi, Trish Goodkin, 34 Matola Drive. First of all, one of those images is ancient antiquity. It's a Roman vessel. So, there you go. You can find that in any museum in the United States. My name is Trish Goodkin. I stand here to speak to you all as a miserable, mostly middle-aged woman with nothing to lose. I'm a 1983 graduate of North Kingstown. My siblings, classes 71, 73. My niece and nephew, '06 and '09. My four kids, 17, 18, two in the class of '22. I want to thank you educators for working so diligently on behalf of the students in this town, my town, through this last COVID year and going forward. It is admirable that you choose to work on behalf of these kids. You choose that for your lives. I thank the nurses who have had to manage new protocols and symptoms and crazed parents, worried students, worried faculty. And now, I find that I must thank the librarians for standing firm and standing up for students of all types, genders, orientations. I would like to specifically address my comments to the kids of color, kids whose religions are different, kids with disabilities, LGBTQ kids. Do not let this crazy political narrative define your experience at NK. Gen Z is just the generation we raised you to be. You are thoughtful, accepting, inspiring, and most of all, well-educated. Carry this knowledge with you. Life is very short. It was just yesterday that I was wreaking havoc amongst the walls of the old school. Make your life full of purpose and keep your ears, your eyes, and your heart open. I see you. You are important. You are valued. You are loved. Thank you. Go Gen Lima.
Thank you. Next is Kathleen Layton.
Hello. So short. Hi, I'm Kathleen Layton, and I reside at 17 Pilgrim Drive in North Kingstown. First of all, I want to say thank you so much for everything that you're doing for our North Kingstown education community. I've been watching the school committee meetings from the comfort of my own home. I've been mildly horrified. I came the last one, and I was positively horrified. I'd also like to apologize to each and every one of you for the abuse and for the cruelty that's been, you know, put your way. I'd also like to say, Gen Lima, I support you. You and I have been able to volunteer on some of the same committees, and you are the person that always shows up. Perhaps I'll see you Saturday at Community Connections in Yorktown. I also know many of you have volunteered with my son's Boy Scout troops by speaking to them about the government, so thank you. What I'm really here to say, though, is that this is an excellent book, okay? If anybody would like to borrow my copy, please. They're hard to come by. Drove to Smithfield for it. I think perhaps we should have a book club, a community-wide book club, to read the book. It's a poignant book. It's a coming-of-age graphic novel. It's provocative, and it makes you think. I learned a lot, and I highly recommend it. The first thing I want to say, and the other thing is, book banning is horrible, okay? This is, I can't believe that this is what we're discussing, but it's the most widespread form of censorship in the United States. And, you know, I think that some may find the content questionable. And that's, that's their right, okay? But there are students and parents who support and want access to this kind of literature. Public schools and libraries have an obligation to support intellectual freedom and to meet the interests of the whole community. Removing books like Gender Queer violates the First Amendment rights of the students, the parents, and the community. So, if you don't like the book, don't read the book. And to wrap it all up, I asked children, students, ninth graders recently, I discussed it with them. So, I've read the book. I've done a little research, and you know what they said? We're not really children in high school. We're young, young adults, so this is appropriate literature. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Brian Odell, followed by Ramona Bessenger. Next was Brian Odell, followed by Ramona Bessenger, sorry.
Brian Odell, 152 Salisbury Avenue. What does diversity, equity, inclusion look like? Apparently, in North Kingstown, DEI is graphic pornography in the classroom and school library, with you condoning it. DEI is our town library recommending a book called Sex Plus for a 10-year-old. Chapters in that book include masturbation and orgasm, sex toys, and sexploration. DEI is the rape of a 14-year-old Virginia girl in the school bathroom by a transgender student with a school board covering it up. DEI in some states is some states passing laws that allow schools to conceal crimes from the community, including sexual assaults at school and on school buses. DEI is an equity audit survey that asks middle-school students the following questions without parents' permission. "With how many people have you had sexual intercourse? The last time you had sexual intercourse, did you or your partner use a condom? Have you ever had oral sex? DEI is an eight-year-old boy coming home from school announcing to his parents that his teacher said he could be a girl, and all he needed to do was take a pill and then have his penis cut off. DEI is new rules permitting students to leave class whenever they want, without a pass, and teachers aren't even allowed to ask them where they're going. DEI in some Rhode Island schools is students no longer standing to recite the Pledge of Allegiance and believing patriotism is racist. DEI is a dress code that says it's suddenly okay for girls to wear a tube top or pajamas to school. DEI is a top administrator at a school in Texas advising teachers that if they teach the Holocaust, they must also teach the opposing viewpoint, you know, that the Holocaust really didn't happen. DEI says that expecting black kids to get the right answers to math questions is a form of white supremacy. DEI is a school creating affinity group for black and brown students but not allowing one for Jewish students. DEI guidance from the National Council of Family Relations states that a two-parent households are racist. DEI believes hiding abortions, having sex-change operations, and hormone blockers for girls is just a normal, normal coming-of-age. DEI is a teacher reading three to four LGBTQ-plus books for her students every day in second grade. DEI is an Indiana high school principal coaching teachers how to hide parents the fact that critical race theory is being taught. DEI is teachers across the country encouraging students to denounce their parents and become activists. DEI is students punching a teacher so hard she got a concussion and was vomiting. But the student was not disciplined because the new thing in schools is called restorative justice. DEI in North Kingstown is a school department DEI subcommittee where diversity of thought is not welcome and inclusion is only for some. Any reasonable person would think that each of these is disturbing and wrong. How about you?
Thank you. Next, I have Ramona Bessenger, followed by Catherine Pastore.
Okay, first of all, I would like to say that--
If you could just start with your name and address for the record, sorry.
Ramona Bessenger, 437 David Avenue in Jamestown.
Thank you.
And I would like to start with saying very definitively, we do not give a damn about what you think is normal. It is not your job to instill a definition of normal. Our job as educators is to teach kids how to read and to write. That is it. Our job is not to teach children how to give blowjobs. Our job is not to teach children how to talk to adults in secret in the name of social, emotional learning. Our job is not to talk to children about their personal family problems and then have them report on it. That is not okay. Furthermore, I would like to speak specifically to the anti-American sentiment in all of the books. Currently, in the American literature class that my son is in, he is reading at least three core novels that have tons of references to disgusting and lewd sex. I don't need to go into that now because we've heard enough of that. But I will say that in one book, The Bluest Eye, which is an excellent book, but in conjunction with so many other books that are of the same narrative, it is too much, and we've had it. We've had it with all the sex. We have had it with all the anti-American sentiment, and it must end. And you're not listening to us, and we are not going away, and we are not going to get quieter. We are going to continue to voice our opinions and speak up. I just want to say that I just want to say that the latest textbooks are conflating and changing American history. I opened up the latest 10th-grade American history textbook, and to my surprise, not really, though, I could see that American history is completely being altered. More and more of our great literary tradition is being excluded, while all sorts of bizarre narratives are being included. Specifically, American, one of the things is that American literature now apparently began with Native Americans. That is an outright lie. And I would ask that you have, we have an audit of all the books that our children are reading and that we review all the projects that our children are being forced to participate in because they are anti-American, they are filled with hate. And in fact, I have lessons here that are actually conflating literature with current-day events. For example, police are mentioned in this specific lesson where police are seen as the aggressors. Enough already--
I have to ask you to please wrap up.
Excuse me. We've had it. Stop it and listen to us now.
Thank you. The next person I have is Catherine Pastore.
Hi, my name is Catherine Pastore from 121 Suffolk Drive. First of all, I want to thank you for the work that you do to provide award-winning resources to kids that are looking for support and for answers in difficult circumstances. I was going to start this off with an out-of-context quote from To Kill a Mockingbird. But that work was done for me at the beginning of these comments when pictures were taken out of context and the dirty part of a book was written, was read. And that actually was a pornographic display because it was divorced from content and from context. And that's the trap that we fall into when we look at the images that are excised from Gender Queer without reading the whole graphic novel. I actually fell into it. Taken on their own, the images are shocking, and one wonders how they could be otherwise. I had to read the novel to find out. And I'm here to tell you that the images are literally an illustration for young people who may be questioning their gender identity, that they are not abnormal or crazy, that they are not alone in their confusion, and that there is a way through the maze. Dr. Ogier read it. He was attacked for his response to it, and I believe that response was the same as mine. But we both read it. How many of those who are railing against it have done the same? Don't give me the excuse that you wouldn't read anything that has such trash in it because if you're going to use that half-considered reasoning, you would miss a lot of the gems of American literature. There is another quote in To Kill a Mockingbird that we all likely read, excuse me. And that is, "People generally see what they look for, and they hear what they listen for, and they have the right to subject their children to it." And people do have that right. And they have the right to incomplete information if that's the hill that they want to die on. What they don't have is the right to keep the whole story from everybody else.
Thank you. Next is Kathleen Guarino, followed by Megan Riley.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Guarino, 139 Summit Beauling. I don't have any children in the schools, but I do have grandchildren in the North Kingstown public schools. My daughter moved here because of the schools. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I want to say thank you to the school committee, the school staff, the teachers, and all of the North Kingstown kids who are living through this awful time. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your kindness. I can't say that more strongly. You need to know that there are many, many, many people in the community behind you, even though they may not be coming to these meetings every other week. Okay. The other thing is, this business about the book. I am 82 years old. I remember things that I have been told or I have witnessed going back a very long time in this country. I lived through the '60s. I was not a hippie, but I was somewhat of an activist. And my generation really thought that we were on an upward trend and all that ugly, racist, horrible stuff was going down the drain. We thought our generation ended it. But guess what? It didn't. And here we are, 2021, and I am seeing stuff that I never saw back in the '60s. The other thing is, going back even further, I had uncles who were in the Second World War. I remember praying for-- I remember praying for them every night with my mother and father that they would come home unscathed from that war, that terrible war. I remember hearing about Hitler. I remember hearing about the Jews being murdered and gassed. It was so, for a young kid, it was so unbelievable, but that could never happen in the United States of America. I believe that, I believe that from the bottom of my heart, but what I have seen happening, not just here in North Kingstown, but across this country, is a lot of fear-based ugliness. And when you talk about-
I have to ask you to please wrap up.
Okay, when you talk about burning books or taking books away or censoring, you are going down a very slippery slope, and I just hope we don't go that way here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Megan Riley. I will answer that question. At the microphone, if there is no one near the speaker, the microphone is far enough away that we would allow someone to not wear a mask at the microphone. You must put your mask on when you return to your seat. Thank you.
I'm talking real fast, I got a lot to say. My name is Megan Riley, 15 Eden Court. Don't start it yet. I have read these books and others from the current high school English curriculum and asked, who's choosing these books? I got a response from the North Kingstown English Department Chair. Our teachers collectively review new book choices and agree on their placement within the curriculum. Per Jake Mather, our current curriculum was very highly vetted and researched by our teachers, administrators, department heads, and then brought to the school committee for approval. Per Jen Lima, the district has a team that is tasked with overseeing the curriculum, and I defer to their professional judgment in that area. However, the official school committee policy says something different, IGF. A curriculum cycle will be established to provide for continuous updating and renewal of the curriculum, including selections of materials. A district curriculum committee chaired by the curriculum director and composed of students, parents, teachers, administrators, and elected officials will oversee the curriculum improvement process. Per the North Kingstown High School Handbook, page 21, "Students who violate the behavior expectations in our school community will receive consequences for use of discriminatory language, foul or offensive language." And I apologize for the next part to the little kids who are here or listening, but these books in the curriculum are rife with words like retard, douchebag, erection, masturbation, masturbator, goddamn hell shit, fuck, asshole, ass bitch, boner, hard-on big balls, fag, lesbians, gay, homo, and Jesus Christ. And in 2018, the author of this book was accused by 20 mostly Native American women of sexual abuse and harassment, including sexual intimidation, sexual manipulation, and overt sexual coercion. He later apologized for his behavior. Per Gender Queer, per the school committee policy NSBA IGL, the school media center is a part of the total school program. Dr. OJ, who says he has read this book, as have I, as I stated, this is available in our library. According to him, "I feel it is important to see these images and quotations in context of the full text. I didn't have time to show you the whole book, so here are just a few things in the book." And in this case, he says, "The intent of the author is to be concerned for the sexual health of those who are transgender, clearly not to be pornographic. With pornography, there is an intent to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic emotional or emotional feelings. Interest in erotic gay fiction has been so prevalent in my friendships, one could mistake it for a prerequisite." Furthermore, there are three references in this book that I found and probably more that refer to a sex toy website, which actually talks about fun things like under-30 gay saunas, books for teens on sex education, fantasies, sexual techniques defined and demonstrated. There's also another reference to a memoir about a lesbian author who describes her father as a closeted homosexual teacher who is involved with his male students. And finally, a website that actually is a porno website, adults gay-only, adults-only gay or straight porn site that specifically states, "Pick your porn, gay or straight, and provided that you are 18 years of age or older and aren't offended by sexually explicit imagery, you agree that you will not permit any person under 18 to have access to any of this materials contained within this site." And yes, I have read these books, and by the way, others, and this is all in these books.
I have to ask you to please wrap up.
So ask me how I could take this out of context? It is the context.
Next person who asks to speak is Janet Collier, followed by Tiffany MacLeod.
My name is Janet Collier. I live at 210 Allegra Lane here in North Kingstown. School Committee Policy Manual, Supplementary Material Selection, Adoption and Use, IJK.1. Purpose: This policy has been established by the school committee to assure that materials of questionable content are not utilized in the conduct of classroom instruction or activities without prior approval of the administration and parental consent. It further believes, however, that there are sufficient and varying materials which are available to facilitate the teaching of any concept or subject matter without the introduction of materials of questionable quality of content where said is objected to by a student's parents. To this end, the school committee sets forth the following policy statement. There will be no use of R-rated movies or materials except as utilized in the implementation of policy IMB IMC. No R-rated movie or materials will be shown or shared with students in the North Kingstown School Department unless it is directly related to the curriculum, has prior approval of the building administrator, and prior written parental permission has been obtained for the student to participate in the viewing and discussion of such materials. If prior written permission is not obtained, alternate educational materials, experiences are to be provided for those students who are excluded by parental determination. School Committee Policy Manual, Administrative Regulation, IJL-R, Media Center Materials Selection. Selection and removal of materials in all formats for the media center is a continuous process using as many of the standard selection aids as possible. It is a cooperative process with media specialists, teachers, administrators, and students all having a part in creating an adequate and workable collection. Suggestions for materials to be purchased may come from administrators, faculty, and students, although final selection is made by the library media specialists. Materials shall be appropriate for the age for whom the materials are selected. Some of these policies were violated during the selection of materials, and at least one policy-
I have to ask you to please wrap up.
IJLR needs an overhaul by the school committee so as to include parents in the decision-making process of the materials, abiding by existing comments and policies and amending policies to ensure that parents have some say-
Again, if you could please wrap up.
-and what their minor children have access to a school.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer LaCombe, followed by Howard Brown.
Hi, my name is Jennifer LaCombe. I'm at 17 West Main Street. I have four children who have been through the North Kingstown school system, two of whom are still here. I want to thank you all for doing the work that you're doing. That flag that we just pledged allegiance to is "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, for all, every single American, not some Americans, all of them." There is injustice in this country right now.
If we could please, if you could address-
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. That's it, that's all I really want to say. I want to say thank you for working as hard as you are to ensure that there is liberty and justice for all, all of our children.
Thank you.
My name is Howard Brown. I live at 230 Lantern Lane East. I'm speaking as Executive Director of Rhode Island Coalition for Israel tonight, although we support the North Kingstown Parents Against Indoctrination. I want to speak about the goals of the school department. This letter was sent to each of you today. Dear North Kingstown School Committee members, the agenda of your October 26-21 meeting today includes the approval of school committee district goals. This includes the following: create an ethnic studies course and/or graduation requirement. I need to speak to this because you're about to address these goals tonight. I am writing with concern about the creation of an ethnic studies course. While on the surface, the study of various ethnicities sounds benign. In fact, the field of ethnic studies is driven by radical oppressed oppressor ideology. The divisiveness of that ideology is all the more of concern to many in the community because in practice, it encompasses a strong anti-Zionist, anti-Semitic component. The fierce controversy that has ensued in California, often the source of trends that are adopted nationally, should be a red flag. The same controversy is now surfacing in our backyard in Massachusetts. In the current environment, ethnic studies should be approached with caution if not postponed. Should the adoption of an ethnic studies course nevertheless be pursued, then Rhode Island Coalition for Israel urges that our organization be represented as a stakeholder in the process from day one. Thank you for your consideration. Luanne Pazulo, Chair K-12 Education Committee. The same letter was sent prior to the South Silk Committee previous meeting, which was adjourned prematurely. No response has been received. While not rightly recognized as such in critical race theory circles, the lived experience of the Jews is centuries of oppression and are currently suffering one of the worst outbreaks of Jew hatred in American history, with defacement, arson in synagogues, Jews being attacked in the streets in New York and Los Angeles. The lack of a response from either the school committee or the DEI subcommittee suggests a lack of true diversity, equity, and inclusion within the NK educational leadership itself. We would ask you to demonstrate otherwise. There's other commentary on what happened in California with the adoption of ethnic studies. The organization, a national coalition against antisemitism called Amcha Initiative, said, "While certainly not all in the ethnic studies field fall into this category, there is a vocal and active faction of extremists who have long been seeking to inject their anti-Semitic and anti-Zionist agenda into our nation's classrooms. Making matters significantly worse, California's teachers' unions and public universities' ethnic studies departments proudly support those overt anti-Semitic curricula." The Los Angeles Times wrote, "California schools and school districts will now become entangled in a volatile political divide over critical race theory and the extent to which it is incorporated in the state's ethnic studies curriculum. School boards must hold public hearings on the courses they plan to offer. Critical race theory is rarely mentioned in the teaching guide, but critic Williamson M. Evers said, 'The overall model curriculum is permeated with content that makes it racially divisive, burdened by fetish ideology.'" According to Evers, a former U.S. Assistant Secretary of Education and some other opponents, "The problematic issues include a reliance on the concepts of critical race theory, leading to a portrayal of American culture and institutions through a racially divisive prism of oppressor and victim." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Pamela Panero, followed by Elizabeth. This one I'm not sure on, Finnegan, Finan, Evan, sorry.
Pam Panero, 710 Slocombe Road. I'm really here on a different matter. I'm interested to learn more about the enrollment analysis that you have on the agenda. I'd like to, I hope you can discuss it tonight and explain, is this a longevity study? I saw it's related to the five and 10-year goals. I'd like to know how long the study will take to do. Will anything related to that study affect next year? I know the schools are already crowded at the elementary school. I still have a student in elementary school. In the past, these matters have waited to the end of the school year. I would really appreciate them to be moved up in the school year so we could prepare our children for any changes that may come. I'm also interested if this is related to transportation at all or times of the elementary school start times. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I apologize if I got the name wrong.
Yeah, did you miss Skipmy?
I see Elizabeth, I can't read the last names, sorry. Is that you?
No, my name is Tiffany. I was after-
Yeah, you missed her.
Oh, I, I'm horribly sorry, you are correct. I crossed off a wrong name, so let's let her go. That's completely my mistake, sorry about that. So Tiffany MacLeod, my sincere apologies.
That's okay.
Tiffany MacLeod, 170 Brookhaven Road. All I keep hearing is, it's not a big deal. We have books in the library that constantly talk about sex, along with pictures and references to porn websites about bondage and kink, another book in the curriculum that has graphics, sexual language, and homophobic terms written by an author who publicly had to apologize after over 10 women came out saying he sexually assaulted them, and a superintendent who writes condescending emails to parents who are angry about it. For those who think this isn't a big deal, read the books, I dare you, and ask yourself if this is appropriate for a 14-year-old to be reading. You are claiming the book is intended for transsexual health. If that's the case, the only way these books are acceptable is if they are locked in the guidance counselor's desk and given to a student who is interested after a signed permission slip by the parent is returned. But where is it? Where is this book, you ask? It's on display in the library and in the hallways, and conveniently, it was taken down along with the Black Lives Matter signs and all the other race-based books during open house. How convenient. It's clear you're trying to hide this, and it infuriates me beyond belief. This is the talk of the town. We caught you. This is making the news. It's been talked about on radio shows, it's being exposed on social media. You're supposed to have our children's best interests at heart, and instead, you're abusing them because your sick minds are caught up in this political war. Remove these books and apologize for your disgusting behavior. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. So next again is Elizabeth. And again, I apologize for the name, so if you could just speak it clearly just so I can get it for the record.
Hi, Elizabeth Dwyer.
Which address?
17 Johnson Avenue.
Then, nope, sorry, this is, I'm looking for someone who lives on 40 Earl Drive. Okay, sorry, again, I apologize, I just couldn't quite read the last name.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Finneran, 40 Earl Drive. I almost didn't come tonight because I had heard about the last meeting, and, you know, I have a hard job, I'm not going to say what it is, but it's a hard job, and I really, really didn't want to be exposed to this sort of bullying mob mentality that I'm feeling here. I'm sorry. Can you respect me? I actually am a teacher, and if anybody in my class was acting like these people who don't know how to keep still and show respect, there would be consequences. Somebody earlier, excuse me. Somebody earlier, excuse me![597.16][597.16](APPLAUSE).
It'll be best if we address the committee rather than the crowd for everyone, please. So if you could continue, please, thank you.
It's a little hard to concentrate when I'm being harassed. However, somebody was mentioning America. And what is America? And it's a great question, because in all honesty, I've really heard some really good solutions tonight, even though personally, I am probably more on the side of the, you know, let's have a lot of different kinds of books. But I do appreciate some of the solutions, the parent involvement, that have been proposed. I think that this is a democracy. We live in a democracy. That's my understanding. And so to have parent involvement makes a lot of sense. Or if you feel so strongly, run for office. That's another way that we make our voices heard in this country. My understanding is that mob rule and rudeness is not what I consider to be what I want in this country and in this school. I teach that students have to think clearly and critically. And that doesn't, you know, you guys are so obsessed with the sex stuff, I don't know. But it's like, you can just look at the book. That's it.
Next is Kimberly Hatch, followed by Elizabeth Dwyer.[710.04][710.04](APPLAUSE). Next is Kimberly Hatch.[717.25][717.25](APPLAUSE). Last call for, you're coming, sorry. Didn't see you walking down.
Hi, good evening. I am a graduate of North Kingstown High School.
If you could state your name and address for the record, sir.
Kimberly Hatch, 31, Pat Circle. I'm a graduate of the high school and also a parent of a 10th grade student at the high school. I would like to speak in support of all of you for the great work that you do, for the School Committee, the Superintendent, and also the DEI Subcommittee. You are doing a wonderful job. And just as I'm listening to the comments, I would like to make some clarification that DEI is not something that is a radical concept. It's diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is not something to be afraid of, and it's not connected with this discussion around the banning of books. I would like to speak in support of the 10th grade English teachers. The English teachers are qualified, and they are educated professionals who are invaluable in guiding our children in how to interpret literature. They teach important critical thinking skills that kids need during this stage of their education. The English teachers are able to select and guide, select books to guide instruction. One example is The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. The 10th grade is reading this book this year, and it has been included for more than 10 years in the curriculum. So I did have a conversation with an English teacher as to why this book would be an important book to teach. It helps students to understand, develop an understanding of Native American culture, reservation life, and poverty. It allows students to look at the world in a different way and to make comparisons with their own lives. The purpose of the book is to teach real-world, critical thinking. Focusing on small passages does not convey the overall meaning of the book. So before the idea of banning books is considered, it is important to think of the benefits of these books and why these books were chosen in the first place. Our children are being taught them by professionals who are very capable to teach the subject. I hope that as a town, that we can all work together to participate in more reasonable and productive discussions in order to make sound and well-thought-out decisions related to our children's education. Thank you.
Thank you.[871.25][871.25](APPLAUSE). Next is Elizabeth Dwyer, followed by James Gallo.
Hi, Elizabeth Dwyer, 17 Johnson Avenue. I don't have a prepared statement. I just came tonight to show my support, give my thanks to everyone on this stage, the School Committee, elected officials, the Superintendent, and as well as the entire school system. I definitely am here in support of all of you, the work you do. I would like to thank you. I think it's probably not what you signed up for when you ran for office, although you might have had some inkling, maybe it wasn't, you couldn't have imagined it would turn out to be so frequently that you would have to be victims of yelling, abuse, belittling...[931.82][931.82](APPLAUSE).
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please allow the speakers to speak. Thank you. Please continue.
And as I have sat here tonight, it does occur to me that I wonder about the level of bullying and abusive kind of talk and rabble-rousing that's disrespectful. And it makes me wonder how much is going on in these homes and the kind of model...[964.43][964.43](APPLAUSE). The kind of...
Ladies and gentlemen, could we please allow the speakers to speak? Thank you.
The kind of modeling that is going on in the homes, because I feel that if people are this upset and not willing to be respectful, as the previous Elizabeth mentioned, then there must be, they must be, not have very good coping skills to deal with what they're upset about. Because I think the rest of us are able to be here and speak respectfully and show our respect for you, whether we, whether we agree on occasion or not. There's definitely things that we're not all going to agree about. But I think there's a better way of showing it than interrupting people and being bullied. And I just again want to thank you.[1021.32][1021.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.[1024.20][1024.20](APPLAUSE). Next, we have James Gallo.[1030.00][1030.00](APPLAUSE).
Hello. James Gallo, 200 Minor Road.
Again, if you could stop, if we could please allow the speakers to speak, please. Thank you. Mr. Gallo.
Well, obviously, you have a big problem here. You're really, as far as, you know, putting this kind of material out and causing such a separation and a problem within our community, that in itself is a problem. And I don't know if you're aware, I'm a board-certified psychiatrist, and I think we need a psychiatrist in this room right now. We need group therapy. But most of all, I think, I really question, I mean, I did order the book on Amazon. It's very easy to find, by the way, $17. And I looked at it, and, you know, I can't believe that you would think that this would be appropriate for children.[1097.25][1097.25](APPLAUSE). I really don't. I'm stunned. I really am stunned. I mean, it's pornographic material that really depicts sexual acts. It's clear that this is not appropriate for children. I raised two girls, put them through the school system in Exeter West Greenwich, very small school. I was able to participate with the teachers, and I think they grew up to be very mature, healthy children. If this material was given to my children, I'd be going through the roof. I would be. I have a grandchild who, I have a grandchild that may be going through this school system, but I'll tell you, if this is the kind of stuff that's in this school, he'd be going to a private school. There's no way I would let him be exposed to this kind of thing at that age. We're talking about K through 12 here. We're talking about children developing minds, and you're going to expose them to all of the pornographic material? Well, you might as well put Playboy or Hustler in the libraries as well, because what the hell? Go all the way. It really doesn't make sense to me. You know, and, you know, to have committee members publicly push for abortion rights is also something that I find offensive. Let me tell you a quick story about a 16-year-old who I saw in my practice, who is almost trying, who teachers were trying to convince that it was, she ended up getting pregnant, obviously. Teachers were trying to convince her to get an abortion, because she's too young. Fast forward 16 years, I see her later. She shows me a picture of her son and says to me, "You saved his life."[1220.00][1220.00](APPLAUSE). Remember that, Jenny.[1224.04][1224.04](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Next person is Lori Duffy, followed by Izzy Montini.[1235.66][1235.66](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name's Lori Duffy. I live at 88 Haverhill Avenue.
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to start over.
Sure. My name's Lori Duffy. I live at 88 Haverhill Avenue. I'm a clinical social worker who practices here in town. Tonight, I'm here to speak to everyone who's sitting on stage, but also to teachers, support staff, the librarians, and the nurses. This has been an incredibly challenging few months, on top of an incredibly challenging past 18 months or so. And I know it must be hard at times to believe, but truly, most of North Kingstown is behind you in the work that you're doing. After the display of incivility that we saw two weeks ago, I know that you might have been challenged by that, and also the display of incivility that I would say that we're seeing today. But the next time that someone tries to put you down, remember that confidence is quiet and insecurity is quite loud. I'm here to talk about DEI and why I support it. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among our young people. If you look at the LGBTQ plus community, the rates are four times higher. Nationally, if you just look at high schoolers, 19% of our high schoolers are seriously thinking about suicide, and about 9% have actually made suicide attempts. If you look at some of the risk factors associated with that, setting aside, you know, the traditional mental health issues, the major risk factors that are driving that are bullying, isolation, and lack of supports. You can't educate a child who thinks more about how to end their suffering than they're thinking about algebra and Hamlet. We have a mental health crisis on our hands, and our suicide rates in Rhode Island are trending up, they're not trending down. Our schools have the greatest chance to have the biggest impact on supporting and strengthening our young people, and all of our young people need to be taught tolerance and acceptance. DEI can truly help us guide a culture in which children feel safe, and the kids who, the kids see that the adults want them to thrive, want them to be healthy, that all kids are important. DEI protects students and helps us see the beauty and strengths in their differences and how to celebrate them, not hide them away in an effort to appear just like everyone else. We can do a better job at making sure all kids have the same access to supports and services, and help them to feel, feel that we believe they are worthy of them. And for these reasons, and so much more that I wish I could go more depth and breadth to, I fully support the work of the DEI Subcommittee. Thank you.[1415.66][1415.66](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Next is Izzy Montini.
Hi, my name's Izzy Montini, 70 Bethany Lane. So I'm a senior here at North Kingstown High School, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak at tonight's meeting. And I'm even more grateful that you were all able to speak and express your concerns. Our democracy could not function without different opinions. However, we cannot continue on like this. We can't continue with the hostility being presented at each meeting and online. We're all neighbors, friends, community members, and we stand here attacking each other and so divided. You are all talking over others and screaming and booing, which is really disrespectful and jeopardizing our democracy. I was nervous to speak tonight because of this negative atmosphere. If I speak in opposition, will I be booed? Go ahead, boo me. Go ahead.[1480.54][1480.54](APPLAUSE). Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Will people in the audience speak over me? Yeah, I think you already have. I realize that there are a lot of emotions in this room tonight. There's a lot of anger and a lot of passion, and that's okay to feel that way. But I think we're losing sight on how to think critically about a situation, and we're letting, please let me speak, and we're letting our emotions get the best of us. Have you ever stopped to ask what students think? Students for Change has given you ample opportunity to meet with students and discuss these books that you are concerned about, or how we feel about topics in our classroom. I, for one, would like to encourage that type of productive discussion, but it will never occur if either side goes into it with the preconceived notion that the other side is brainwashed or being lied to. We need to all be respectful to each other. Let's hear each other out instead of booing and talking over people. Finally, I would like to express my support for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Subcommittee and the work that is being done. I would also like to express how grateful I am that the School Committee is able to get back to work on what they were elected to do. Thank you.[1552.45][1552.45](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Next, I have Bob Vanderslice, followed by Jim McGuinn.[1558.75][1558.75](APPLAUSE).
I'm Bob Vanderslice. I live at Prospect Avenue in North Kingstown. I don't have anything to add. In the interest of time, let me just say thank you to you all. This is a very difficult job. Thank you for listening to everybody in the audience. I hope you can make them understand their voices are being heard, and I never dreamed that issues of infection control, books in the library, and other things would become so controversial and divisive. So thank you for doing this very difficult job, for trying to create an environment in which equity and inclusion, diversity is celebrated. So thank you once again.
Thank you. Next, I have Jim McGuinn, followed by Kim Laneway.[1626.62][1626.62](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. Jim McGuinn, 412 Jimmy Rock. Really, this began with the recall, and that was started by a student. And the recall was a democratic process that was voted for by our town. And we had a very high level of signatures to get. The California recall, they needed 1,004, which was 3.5% of their population. We needed 11.2% of the North Kingstown population, almost three times as many. Now, we missed it by a couple hundred, but we had a lot of people stepping forward. And we had a lot of people who were very upset, people from all backgrounds and all origins. We had African-American people coming up. I was at the post office every weekend. And I remember one weekend, normally I would have a protester next to me, three feet away, for a couple hours, and I'd engage them. And sometimes people would come up and yell at me, and that's fine. I got yelled at by the CEO when I went to get meeting minutes at the School Department. That's fine. But we had a young African-American woman, about 30, come up to sign the petition. And I was looking at one of Mrs. Lima's supporters. And when she saw this person sign, there was a grimace on her face. And I said, "You're judging her, aren't you?" It was kind of like a deer in headlights. She didn't know what to say. This is something that we need to really talk about. And I really don't understand why, we asked, I asked, a month ago, I gave you a list of questions, including, "Why can't we have an open forum?" There was no response to that. Your own policies are not being followed. Your own policies say that you really need, not a DEI committee that was selected with only a few people, all like-minded, and there's no comment. I've been in meetings, and I've run meetings in this town, okay? We've always had public comment. I had to sit there throughout the DEI meeting and actually be insulted with the colorblind. I grew up believing in what Martin Luther King said, and I was told in that, that really was racist, okay? That wasn't correct. You have to... You have to follow your own policies. Health and Wellness, there was a little girl who came up and said that she was in Wickford Middle with the windows open year-round. I went to get health and wellness meeting minutes and was denied, they weren't available. Why is that? You need to do a better job, quite frankly, and one of the things that, I'll tell you what, one of the things that, one of the things that the recall did was, we've got a lot of parents paying attention, and we've got candidates for the next election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kim Laneway, followed by Sue Warburton, and that's the last person I have this evening.
Hi there, my name is Kim Laneway. I live at 47 Sylvan Court, and I'm here to let everybody know that CRT ideas and gender theory ideas are a part of the curriculum at North Kingstown High School. They have been for many years. Five years ago, my son's honors English class was an entire year's worth of indoctrination nation. My son rarely talked about school, suddenly he came home every day with a story about his English class, and I think the parents of specifically boys in that class, it was a big joke, what did they do in Ms. Lawrence's class today? The year started with a ninety-minute documentary, "The Mask You Live In." The program starts with the claim that gender is a social construct, and it quickly devolved into blaming masculinity for all of the ills experienced by boys and young men, bullying, depression, ADHD, suicide, all to blame because of masculinity. It ends with blaming rape and school shootings on so-called toxic masculinity. The main theme of the ninety minutes, boys acting like boys is bad, and they should be feminized to make them better. I wondered, how did it make my son feel to watch this in his English class? I wondered how the film affected the way girls thought about boys, but mostly I thought, what the hell does this have to do with American literature? Other movies left me asking the same question. "Don't Cash Crop My Cornrows," a movie about the sin of cultural appropriation on the part of white girls who dare to braid their hair in a particular way. Again, why is this being shown in my son's honors English ten class? Nearly every text that was chosen by Ms. Jennifer Lawrence had the same several themes, racism, feminism, anti-capitalism. Her handouts asked students to examine classic texts through the lens of Marxism, she asked them to examine the feminist subtext and to consider how capitalism caused harm to the main characters. The year ended with a handout photocopied from the book, "Is Everyone Really Equal: An Introduction to Key Concepts in Social Justice." By the way, I'm sure the photocopying was in illegal copyright. She photocopied Chapter Six, "Oppression and Power," and Chapter Seven, "Racism." The theme was clear, oppression of blacks by whites. There was no such thing as reverse racism, no such thing as reverse sexism. The final nail in the coffin, "A White Privilege Survey," fifty-two statements making sure my son knew that he had inherent privilege. "My gender identity matches my biological sex. I've never felt overweight or underweight. I expect my neighbors to be neutral or pleasant to me." Outrageous. End it.
Thank you. Last person who signed up is Sue Warburton.
Good evening, my name is Sue Warburton, I live at 1595 South Road East Greenwich. I teach students who speak languages other than English here at the high school, and I'm the president of the Teachers Union here in North Kingstown. I've come here tonight to publicly thank Dr. Ogier, Mr. Blasbalk, and the rest of the school committee for their work towards guaranteeing equity for all of our students. We appreciate their support for our students, teachers, staff, as we implement RIDE-approved curriculum. North Kingstown has great schools. The Teachers Union in North Kingstown believes that all students deserve an honest and accurate education. We vow to continue to work together with Dr. Ogier and his administration to ensure that all children thrive in North Kingstown schools and are prepared for a better future. Thank you, everyone, for your night, for your time.
Thank you. That concludes citizens' comments this evening. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. I'll turn things over to Dr. Ogier. What was your name?
Allison Scarlett.
I mentioned in the beginning that anyone that did not put their name and address down, I would skip. You did not put your name and address down, I said it twice. If you say your name and address, I'll let you continue now.
My name is Allison Scarlett, I live at 65 Spring Street.
Okay, so give me, give me one second to get my timer ready, because I don't have it ready, and then we'll let you begin. Okay. Go ahead, thank you.
I have a child who is sexually confused, I actually have two children who are sexually confused. One is an older woman at twenty-three, and a child who is in high school. And my son came to me the other day with the book that you're talking about, and he said, "Mom, what is this, this, I don't understand why they're throwing this at me. I guess I just pressed down here." This feels really weird. I don't think I like this. No, okay, nope, 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 this is from your book that you're promoting. Turn it off, turn it off, haha, well, that wasn't for me. The next day, oh wait, a few weeks later, I bought one. I remember learning in my bedroom doorway, imagining how this vibrator was going to make me feel. I got off by presenting the front of my jeans against my doorway on the unopened box. But when the time came to actually turn it on, I'll try the lowest setting, that's what Erica used in the comic. Is that what you want to promote to your children? Is that what you think that my children want to see? My children are actually gender neutral, okay? And they're confused about this. Okay? That's disgusting. Okay? If I would have acted it out and gyrated again against the door that you were talking about, you would be disgusted, but I didn't. Why don't we think about our children for once, okay? Instead of your agenda. Acceptance is a thing. Stop doing this to our kids. Stop making them confused. It's insane, and I'm sorry if you're offended, but really I'm not. I'm not offended, and I'm not sorry you are.
So again, the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report, and I'll turn things over to Dr. Ogier.
Thank you, Mr. Blasbalk. I have a few announcements, but I'm going to save a couple of them for an email to the community. I would like to spend my time tonight talking about the request to ban certain books from our high school library and curriculum, and I'll begin my remarks on the issue by reading an email I received this past week from a former North Kingstown High School graduate. "I'm a graduate of the 2007 North Kingstown High School class. I'm writing because I read there is some controversy over the Gender Queer book in the library. I'm so disappointed to hear there is a lot of criticism about the book when libraries are resources meant to be free of censorship. I didn't come out until college because there were no resources available at the school for me to refer to. I had no idea there were other people like me back then, even though it should have seemed obvious. It's so harmful to restrict education for the LGBT community when the world already caters to the heteronormative lifestyle. I sincerely hope that educating the public on why alternative resources are so important will continue to be your stance. I have read the book and found it to be well-written and thoughtful. We don't all have to agree on things, but we do all need to allow each other space in this world to exist." And I'd appreciate your quiet, please. I sat quietly for every speaker tonight. The comments made tonight and at recent meetings have been, in many cases, void of context, and any discussion of banning books should never be taken lightly. Gender Queer is available in our high school library, as well as seventeen other libraries in this state, including four other high schools. It is intended for a young adult audience and is considered a valuable resource for any student working through issues of sexual identity and/or identifying as transgender. The book is not pornographic. Again, I sat quietly for everybody tonight, I'd appreciate the same. The intent of this book is to provide context and support to students and to prompt discussion and perspective. It is not unlike those discussions we might have about sexual references in works of literature. The intent, the context, from the perspective of the author, is to relay personal life accounts out of a concern for the sexual health and well-being of those who are transgender. Our policy on literary content goes back to 1988 and has been updated as recently as 2007. It states, "The media collection must enrich and support the curriculum, serve the individual needs and interests of the pupils, and other resources, and offer resources for independent study. The Media Center must provide as broad a selection of excellent materials covering both fact and fiction, and at as many levels of difficulty and maturity as can be provided." In selecting books, our media specialists followed the aforementioned school committee policy. In the case of this specific book, this became known to us through positive reviews in School Library Journal. It was researched further to determine to be in keeping with our district policy. To reiterate, any discussion of banning a book should never be taken lightly. The book in question deals with mature questions of sexual identity, and there are students in our high school, as sampled in the letter I read to you, who are asking these questions. There are discussions among our students regarding gender identity and LGBTQ issues at the high school. These topics come up in contemporary issues classes, health classes, and volunteer student organizations such as North Kingstown High School's Sexuality and Gender Alliance. Further, we are aware of reports from the organizations such as the Trevor Project and the CDC Youth Risk Behavior Survey, that LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to consider suicide, to make plans for suicide, and to attempt suicide than their peers. As part of a public school population, LGBTQ youth have as much of a need and a right as any other student to have library resources to support their overall health and well-being. The book in question is a graphic novel. When one examines the book in its entirety, they see that the subject matter of the book is handled responsibly. As parents, we have the very difficult task of educating our kids about what constitutes a healthy sex life and what does not. I fully support a parent's right to tell their child not to take this book out of the North Kingstown High School library. What I oppose is then to deny access to this book for other students.
Please do not block the camera, thank you.
The tradition of American libraries and the world for which we are preparing our young adults is that information is available to all without restriction. Banning books becomes a slippery slope for high schools. Consider books like "The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn," "Catcher and the Rye," "The Great Gatsby," "Native Son," "To Kill a Mockingbird," "Fahrenheit 451," "The Outsiders." These are all, these are all standard options in American middle and high school reading lists. In their day, there were campaigns to ban those books as well. What is the message sent if this particular book, Gender Queer, were to be banned? I would send, it would send one more negative message to our LGBTQ student population that their life experience is something to be banned or censored from public view. Doing so would be one more way to deny their space to exist in this world. Lastly, consider, "Diary of a Part-Time Indian" is about Native American struggles. "Stamped From the Beginning" is about struggles of African-Americans. "Gender Queer" is about transgender struggles. These are the books that people have asked us to ban. What would banning these books say about us? Efforts, efforts to include diverse material in school reading lists goes back decades. Education is about expanding the view of the student to a wide variety of ideas, viewpoints, and perspectives. These include recognition of racial and ethnic diversity, and also of growing recognition of the health and wellness concerns of our LGBTQ students. Our media specialists and our teachers are making reading lists and media selections in responsible ways that recognize and respect the diversity of our world, our country, our state, and our town. This practice is completely in line with our long-established district policies and its mission and vision, which is to, quote, "provide a learning environment that meets the diverse needs of every student." The professional discretion and expertise of our teachers and media specialists to be responsive to these concerns is another reason we should all be very proud of the North Kingstown School Department. As superintendent, I will not support a ban or censor of any of these books.
We'd like to continue the meeting, so, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to continue our meeting, please, if you could sit down, Folks, if you could please clear the area in front of the stage so that we can continue, thank you. Thank you very much. And folks, again, we'd like to have our meeting, if we could please allow us to do so. Do any members of the school committee have any comments? Mrs. Lima.
So first off, I'd like to thank Dr. Ogier for his statements. I agree with everything that he said. Most importantly, that banning books is a slippery slope, and it's not something that I for one am willing to go down. I did want to make a couple comments just to follow up what he said. I, like so many others in the state, read Stamped last summer when it was named the Read Across Rhode Island Book of the Year. I bought copies for my teenagers, but I couldn't get any of them to read it. They didn't have any interest whatsoever. Last month, I downloaded the audiobook of Diary of a Part-Time Indian, and I listened to it in the car. My son, who's a junior at this high school and did not read the book in 10th grade, took his headphones out to listen to it with me every time he was in the car, and he encouraged me to quote-unquote "put the book on" whenever he was with me. My other son, who's a senior at this school, he did read it when he was in 10th grade, and he spontaneously offered up to me what a good book he thought that it was. And not to add another book to the list that is going to be protested, but he said that if I was going to review books that had mature content in it, I should actually be listening to The Blueest Eye instead. Both boys actually told me that. My daughter, who's nineteen, read Gender Queer when I had it in the house, but neither of my sons, to my knowledge, even was interested in looking at it. Of course, for those pages, of course, obviously they did. My point in sharing all this about my family is that every family and every child is different. And while parents unquestionably can decide that they do not want their child reading a certain book, they do not have the right to limit another child's access to it. I had never heard of Gender Queer until last month's meeting. My first instinct when I saw the pictures was that it must have been included in the school's library collection for a reason, but even I had to wonder after I saw the pictures. So I read the book, and what I found in this award-winning memoir, and it has won two awards, is that it's poignant, sometimes painful, and what is likely a welcome relief to an adolescent who's questioning their own who's questioning their own gender, identity, or sexuality. Does it have mature content? Yes. Is it pornography? No. No, it's not. It is also not a part of the curriculum. It is simply--
Ms. Lima, hold on a second, because people can't hear you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please allow the speakers to speak.
It is not part of the curriculum. It is simply one of the many resources available in the high school library for students who need them. A library is there to provide information on all topics, not just those that make us feel comfortable. Adolescence is a time of questioning. Ideally, children will involve their parents in those questions. But it is naive to think that kids bring all of their questions to their parents, and it is dangerous to think that all kids have parents who are safe spaces for them to process certain questions with. According to the American Library Association, children and young adults unquestionably possess First Amendment rights, including the right to receive information through the library. Constitutionally-protected speech cannot be suppressed solely to protect children or young adults from ideas or images that a legislative body believes to be unsuitable for them. Back in 1949, Pennsylvania Supreme Court Justice Curtis Bach made the following statement in regard to an obscene book accusation. This is in the case Commonwealth versus Gordon. "I should prefer that my own three daughters meet the facts of life and the literature of the world in my library than behind a neighbor's barn, for I can face the adversary there directly. If the young ladies are appalled by what they read, they can close the book at the bottom of page one. If they read further, they will learn what is in the world and in its people. And no parents who have been discerning with their children need fear of the outcome, nor can they hold it back, for life is a series of little battles and minor issues, and the burden of choice is on us all, every day, young and old." Like I said, parents unquestionably have the right to decide what their children have access to, but they do not have the right to limit other parents' access to it. A library is there for everybody, and these books belong in that library.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lima. Any other members like to speak? I prepared a statement. I debated reading it. But I ran for office to represent this community, and I was elected to this office. You're correct. And I'm going to read my own statement here, and I apologize. I'm not always brief. I'll do my best. Unfortunately, many of those individuals who've had objections to this book and have been publicly criticizing it on social media and even on flyers distributed around town have mischaracterized its content and its availability, either by using terms incorrectly or in misleading ways. Having said that, there are many who will object to this book regardless of its context or value, usually without having even read more than a page or two due to its frank discussions of homosexuality, transgender and non-binary identities, and sexual content. I am not speaking to you as your opinions are set in stone. For those who are willing to listen, I offer these observations. And I'm going to make a point. Someone asked for some definitions a little while ago. I'm going to give them to you. First, this book has been labeled child pornography and pornography. Words in the English language have established meanings, and under the dictionary and legal definition of those terms, this book is neither. Pornography is a noun defined as sexually explicit videos, photographs, writings, or the like, whose purpose is to elicit sexual arousal. Yes, the book has sexually explicit content, but that is only half of the definition. Those who have never read this book have no way to comment on what the purpose of that content is. Dr. Ogier has explained that content serves a clear narrative and an informative purpose in the book, and is clearly not designed to elicit sexual arousal. In this internet world, any student who wishes to actually find pornography can easily find more stimulating material than this with a few swipes of their cellphone. It is also not child pornography. Child pornography under Rhode Island law is pornography that contains actual images of children. This is a graphic novel, i.e. a comic book, and has no actual images. So despite what some have said, the book is not pornography or child pornography by any established definition of those terms. The North Kingston School Department has libraries, known as media centers, in elementary, middle, and high schools. The elementary libraries serve kindergarten through 5th grade. In any elementary library, there will be books that are perfectly appropriate for a 5th grader, but not a 2nd grader. Yet we do not pull all 5th grade-appropriate books from an elementary library just because a 2nd grader might pull it from the shelf. I have heard the narrative that this book is available to children. It is in our high school library, which serves grades 9 through 12. High school students are not children. They are young adults ranging in age from 14 to 18 years old. Let's look at the milestones and legal realities for some of those ages. Under Rhode Island law, a 16-year-old sophomore is enough to consent to any medical or surgical procedure without parental consent. A 17-year-old junior is old enough to-- excuse me, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, a 17-year-old junior is old enough to enlist in the military, be handed a rifle, and to die for this country. And an 18-year-old senior is a legal adult, old enough to view or even appear in actual pornography if they so choose. These are the ages of the students in our high school. No teacher is assigning this book in a class as required or even optional reading. No one has to check out or read this book. Yes, it clearly contains sexual content. Yes, it is available to high school students who wish to read it. For the appropriate student in the high school questioning their sexual and gender identity, it contains material that would help them understand that they are not alone. I assure you that the students who attend this high school have sexual and gender identities. Just like elementary libraries, our high school library cannot simply ignore or remove certain material because it may not be appropriate for the entire school population. If this book offends your sensibilities or morals, then this book was not written for you. Simply do not read it, and tell your children to follow your lead. But that does not mean that it should be removed from the library and unavailable to the population that it was written for, and that population absolutely includes some students who attend and will attend this school. And that is what I--
Have no morals or sensibilities.
I'd like to personally thank everyone who spoke this evening, and I'd like to thank those of you who listened to what people had to say, which is clearly not everyone here this evening. Next, we have routine items. No. Next, we have routine items. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to conduct our business. I need our routine items. Sir, please allow us to continue our meeting. Citizens' comments are done. Sir, if you do not stop yelling, I'll have to ask you to leave. I need a motion to seal the executive session minutes of October 12, 2021.
So moved.
I have a motion from Ms. Hildebrand and a second from Ms. Lima. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I did that, thank you. Motion is-- Any opposed? Motion is approved. I can disclose that no votes were taken in the executive session this evening-- sorry, that evening. I need a motion to seal the executive session minutes of October 26, 2021. I have a motion from Ms. Hildebrand, second from Mr. Mather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And I can disclose that there were no votes taken in this evening's executive session. On the consent agenda, are there any items that any members would like to remove from the consent agenda? I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion from Ms. Lima, a second from Mr. Mather. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have school committee approval of the district strategic plan. For discussion purposes, I'll ask for a motion to approve the item 5. A motion from Mr. Mather, and a second from Ms. Hoskins. Any discussion on the strategic plan? I know that a lot of work went into this from the administration. I want to thank you all for all the hard work that you put into it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. School committee approval of the Next Generation Personal Finance Grant, item 6. I have a motion to approve. Motion from Ms. Lima. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Hildebrand. Any discussion?
Actually, I was just wondering--
Sure. More questions?
I'm not sure. Maybe Mrs. King or--
Who would best be able to give us a little background on this?
Just to describe what this is.
This grant is something that Rich Garland, our business and careers teacher at the high school, has pursued with this particular group. It's a one-time grant, and he's going to present to you at an upcoming meeting on what he believes the funds would be best spent on. But it's all the hard work of him and his students in the finance academy. It's really a big deal. It's $10,000. It's really a significant amount of money. We're very proud to have Mr. Garland as a teacher in this district, and I think you're going to be very pleased with the presentation that he has for you. He's working out a couple of items right now on the best way to use those funds to give us a long-term benefit from those funds.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a meeting to run, and we have things that we need to approve. I'd ask if you could please simmer the volume down a little bit, because we can barely hear ourselves talk here. So thank you. So we had a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we have school committee approval of the district goals. If I could get a motion to approve? A motion from Mr. Mather, second from Ms. Lima. Any discussion? One thing I'd like to mention is there was a comment from Mr. Brown this evening that I definitely will take into consideration with respect to his comments as to a studies course. It's definitely something to think about and consider, and, I mean, that's not something that we have approved or even discussed, but to the extent if that does come onto a future agenda or discussion moves forward with a course like that, I definitely would want to reach out and make sure that his concerns are taken into account. So we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we have school committee approval of science reading training. If I could get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion of Ms. Hildebrand. Do I have a second? A second from Ms. Hoskins. All those in favor? Or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. So, for unfinished business, 2021 school budget? Mrs. King, anything?
No.
2122 school budget?
No.
No. CIP, existing bond, future bond?
No, not tonight.
Okay. We don't have any policies on the agenda. Any questions on the special reports, disposal notification, or post-employment benefits valuation report, or the personnel report? And we have no subcommittee reports on the agenda, so we've reached the end of our agenda. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? So a motion from Mr. Mather, a second from Ms. Lima. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming this evening.